All right, welcome to the second webinar in our managing remote work series. Please note, we will be recording the session today, so you can keep your camera off, but feel free to actively use the chat throughout the webinar. My name is Becky Younglove. I'm a leadership development professional on the Training and Organizational Development Team in Maine HR, and I'm excited to have you join me this afternoon for the second webinar where we'll take a little deeper dive into some of these concepts related to how do we effectively manage with alternate work arrangements like remote work? So today, our topic is really these best practices for leading a hybrid team. So we're going to focus in on these, and when we're talking about or referring to a hybrid team, what I'm really talking about is any sort of a flexible work structure. So if you're wondering, this could be a team with, you know, maybe some remote employees or others in the office, or maybe there are some people that work completely remote all the time, or some sort of combination in between any and all of that. So when we're talking about this hybrid team leadership, we're really referring to in some way, shape, or form, some team members at least are at times remote. And we know that this, you know, presents new challenges for us as managers and leaders. Trust, communication, collaboration, all very important aspects of effective management and leadership in general, right? Whenever distance is a factor, it creates some unique challenges as we try to learn these new ways to build and inspire greater levels of trust, effectively communicate through these new structures that we have to establish, and then also, you know, continuing to nurture effective collaboration along the way. So to get us started, I want you to imagine just for a moment that you were recently hired as a new manager on a team. Imagine that you were recently hired as a new manager on a team. And in the chat, I want to hear from you, what are the things that you would want to focus on first if you were brought in, whether you're promoted within or brought in new to UF and you were new to a team in a management role? What would you be paying attention to first? Go ahead and throw those ideas into the chat. I'll give just a moment for some of those to come in. Pay attention as you see your colleagues throwing some ideas in as well. Thank you, right, group dynamics, yep, understanding of current structures, thank you, work styles, preferences, yep, and how about getting to know people, that team culture, aspects of morale, great. Yep, professional, but also personal and life influences on us, right? Exactly, culture, I see a lot of people referencing that. Yep, who is who, how things work, how does the operation happen, right? What are some of my expectations? Thank you, right? And then, thank you, getting to know your employees, right? What are their needs? What are their aspirations? All very important aspects as a new manager coming onto a team, right? So leading a hybrid team at a very foundational level is really actually very similar to being a new manager on a team. The skills are actually quite transferable, they just look a little different. So the question for us today that we're going to strive to really answer in this one hour webinar is to think about how can I more effectively manage and lead a hybrid team to get full participation from everyone, get those, you know, high levels of trust relationships established, and some solid effective communication and collaboration as well, right? This is a big goal. So in case you were wondering, it doesn't happen overnight. It will take a great deal of time, energy, and focused effort to make these things happen. So you might be wondering, where should I begin? So today's focus is we're going to really like zoom in on this framework that we have for stages of team development, and consider the ways that a hybrid team evolves over time. So leading a team in general, challenging, right? No one has said it is easy. Add to that the complexity of leading a hybrid team, and we just kick that difficulty level up a notch, right? It can feel very lonely out there trying to figure out all of these things on your own, and it can also be stressful as well. So my hope for you today is that we can address some of these challenges, provide you with some things to consider, to think about in this space of managing and leading in new ways, and we'll really be focusing on, you know, how do we sort of foster better conversations, deeper connections, and think about those trusting relationships that really require, you know, open and honest communication, but again, distance as a factor. So as we work through each of the phases, we'll discuss some of the ways that you can clarify, connect, and communicate the three Cs today to increase the effectiveness of the team that you are managing. So this is Tuckman's Group Development Model. It provides a structure of team development for us to think about as we assess our current state, and then intentionally take action to stabilize and advance our team practices. This was developed based on observations of regular teams as they evolved, and for us today, we'll use it as kind of this framework to think about best practices when leading a hybrid team where things are sort of all discombobulated, right? And as you can see, there are four distinct stages of development: forming, storming, norming, and performing. So you may be wondering, why are the stages of team development important for me to consider when I'm thinking about a hybrid team? Well, team effectiveness is enhanced when the team has a real commitment to thinking about reflection and ongoing evaluation, what things are working well, where are there opportunities for us to pull together and work even more effectively together? Now, the leader plays a critical role in this development of a team, but it isn't only about the leader, right? You as the leader really help to shape and create those conditions for the team to figure some of these things out along the way. And it's really essential for all team members to have kind of this grasp or understanding of where they're at in the developmental stages as a team, so then we can take some real intentionality around what are those actions that we want to put out in front of us to help us move in this new direction. So let's take a look at that first stage, forming. Team members in this stage are really searching to find out what behavior is acceptable to others, maybe they're even exploring some friendship options as relationships really kind of develop, and they're trying to determine task orientation. Basically, what am I expected to do and how will we function as a group? And during this time, uncertainty can be very high. So people typically accept whoever kind of steps up into a position of authority, whether that's you, the official leader, or someone else, they're going to be looking to someone to step up and lead. So some thoughts or feelings that might come up for folks during this time. Some may be very excited and optimistic and full of anticipation, there's so much new that we can look forward to. Others may be feeling suspicious or fearful or even anxious at this time. They may be wondering, what is expected of me? Why is what I do important to the team or to the organization? And when we feel uncertain, and when we feel that sense of apprehension about a change, it's completely normal, and actually to be expected, that we might be a little more guarded in our interactions with others, right? So it's our natural instincts kind of kicking in to protect us from potential harm. If you were in the first webinar, think back to that scarf model where at this point, people are trying to figure out where do they fit in, right? So whether it's a real or perceived threat to our personal safety, it makes us kind of move into this more guarded fashion. And when that happens, you'll see behaviors where people are starting to be maybe a little more tentative in what they're willing to say or how much they might contribute, they might avoid controversy, kind of play it polite and safe, where they're looking to kind of test out these waters a little bit. They also are looking for safety and approval oftentimes. They may have lots of questions about things that even more so than normal because of this level of uncertainty with the change. So we're going to engage in a couple of different chats throughout these stages, and the first one I want you to think about is, let's imagine that your team has explored some options, and here you are pursuing a hybrid work arrangement. Maybe you've got something where, you know, everybody on the team gets to choose a couple of days that they're going to be in the office and a couple of days that they're going to be remote. So here you are with your team now moving in this direction of a hybrid work arrangement. And your team, you're sensing, they start to be very kind of apprehensive, and you pick up on this sense of uncertainty from this change. I want to hear from you in the chat, what are some things that you could do to address those sorts of challenges when there's apprehension and uncertainty? What comes top of the mind for you that you might want to think about? I'll give just a moment for some of those to come through. Pay attention to the chat so you can see what others are putting in as well, I won't read them all. Oh, thank you, office hours, yep, thinking about how can I provide sort of that ongoing communication, and as they have questions or concerns, they pop up, how can I create a space where they can reach out? Thank you, clarity around what's going on, encouraging that open dialogue, yep. Thank you, Kelly, yeah, managing expectations is an important piece, you're spot on. See, you guys have got some good practices already in place. Thank you, Rebecca, right, more frequent check-ins, not for the purpose of micromanaging everything that I'm doing, but for the purpose of providing more visibility, right? And more clarity, more communication, whether that's with individuals or with teams, exactly. See, you guys had some really great ideas. Thank you, Elizabeth, kind of encouraging that psychological safety to come through, right? So during this time of forming, it's important to note that teams have needs, right? They have needs around things like, what is, you know, this purpose that we have? Why do we, why do we come together in this way? What are the expectations or processes that are in place to help us to be successful? That sense of uncertainty, right, and that lack of safety, that anecdote to that is really to think about what are some of the structures that we could put into place, some goals and direction, clarity around roles that might create that safety and security for the team members, right? And they need tasks to be really clearly defined, so they can focus their energy and efforts in on the work. So there's a couple of different ways that we as leaders can really kind of consider, you know, moving this team in the forward direction. So if we think about our three Cs, so the first one being clarity, right? Think about what does this structure look like, and what is the direction that I want to be able to provide for certain tasks, right? So opening that discussion up to what are the clear expectations, what will results look like? Let's talk about what quality looks like, let's talk about what quantity looks like, let's talk about what the timeframe is that you expect of me, really getting to that granular level of clarity, because people don't have you right there necessarily beside them when a question pops up, right? Defining the teams so the tasks to be accomplished, this is really that space where, as some of you mentioned, we want to be really clear about what our roles are, responsibilities, and how our functions overlap in our new team arrangement, right? And then creating and setting those expectations, making it really clear what you expect when they are remote, what do you expect when people are in office? Are there certain days that you want everyone in the office? We have one of those, right? Wednesdays actually are in-office days where everyone comes together. Let them know what they, when they need to be available. Don't leave that up to guessing, right? If I reach out to you by instant message or chat, I expect that you would answer, and if not, this is the way that you would let me know that something has popped up. Maybe you're out walking the dog, you know, we all take short breaks, but when do you expect people to be available? And, you know, if I check in with you a couple of times and you're not there, then maybe I'm going to have a conversation with you about that, so that we can make sure that you're available when we need you. And when should they send deliverables? You know, what's your expectation around checking messages or getting items to you, right? Sharing that progress, how are you clarifying when successes are happening, and what updates the team might have in general? So it's important to trust your employees to fulfill the expectations that you lay out in front of them, right? You cannot be there right beside remote employees. There's some security for us as managers and leaders when people are in the office, because I can walk by and I can see you're sitting at your computer. Now, I would challenge you to say, you don't really know that I'm working, because at times I may look like I'm working and I may really not be. I'm just using that as an example, but truly and honestly, right? We have to trust our employees to be able to do the job that we've asked them to do. So we have to trust them that they're going to strive to meet our expectations, get things to us on time, try to shift our thinking to focusing in on those results, and then we can worry less about, you know, how they get the results. When we think about sharing progress and successes and updates, I'm sure there are many, if you have some strategies that you've either tried out or that others have done that you're aware of, please feel free to share those in the chat. I know for us, one way we do this is to adopt like a standing meeting. We actually did this before we moved to a hybrid model, but it has been especially important now in the hybrid space, right? So our standing meeting is when each member of our team has one minute or less at this designated time, it's a very short meeting, where we ask one person to volunteer to time everybody too, so there's like roles established. And then we have a specific format, you can create whatever format works best for your team, but for us, we say, you know, what are two things that are priorities for you in the next week or two weeks, and then any support that you might need from your team. So it's really just a way to create some quick updates. It also allows us to provide some progress updates and success sharing as well as we move items along in our work. And then, of course, it's important, that second C, to connect, not only for you to connect with your team, but how you're helping to cultivate and foster the connections across the group, right? So getting actively involved with individuals and the team as a whole, and staying actively involved, so you have that pulse check of what's going on, paying close attention to those informal interactions, you know, carving out protected time for these to happen. When we're in the same physical space, right? We can stop at the water cooler and chat for a couple moments, or, you know, I just swing by your cubby and say, hey, how's this going, you know, or how are you today? So when we're in a hybrid space, right, what will team members be doing to stay connected? What will you be doing to stay connected to individuals when distance is a factor? And if you have any ideas and strategies that you've seen or that you've heard of that have been successful, feel free to share those in the chat. As we think about communicating in this hybrid space, right? Now transparency around decisions, again, foundational, important management skills in general, in a hybrid arrangement where distance can be a factor, even more important. We want to talk frequently about decisions that we make, and also the why behind some of those decisions, right? And recognizing that at times, some people may not be physically in the office when these things are shared, so if they're not, where are those opportunities for me to share it out with the larger group? Because of this, in this forming stage, this uncertainty, this kind of figuring out what's going on, it's even more important as well to think about your one-way communication. Now, if you've taken any of my courses, you know, I'm always talking about two-way communication, but in this sense, it's like, if you're not naturally a very direct person, you have to be very intentional at times to be direct, right? And this is one of those times. This is one of those times where you'll want to really be very direct in offering and soliciting feedback on a regular basis. If you don't already have one-on-one meetings, as someone suggested earlier in the strategies, right, carving out time for those, and considering, you know, in the regular, ongoing communication that we usually have, where are the channels that we need to create where we could provide, you know, direction and clear up misunderstandings as things come up? So it's definitely an investment of time to have more one-way communication with each of your direct reports. If you weren't already doing one-on-ones, it's something new, but it's well worth it, because in the end, you're going to see that you have a lot less uncertainty, concerns that pop up that people don't mention to you that are actually preventing them from getting work done, right? So being available to them can help you to problem solve early, get resources aligned, work through those roadblocks, right? And of course, lastly, it's important for others to have confidence in your abilities. So in the forming stage, if you're not the clear leader, somebody else will take that place, and so it's really important that you demonstrate that you have the abilities to manage and lead at this time, even though we're uncertain about how this is going to all play out, we're going to work through it, and we can give some clarity. And then we're going to think about the ways to demonstrate, you know, optimism and confidence in a way that's truly genuine to you with your team, right? What's most authentic and genuine to you? And then we think about advancing from this forming stage to something that sounds not better, the storming stage. And if you notice, there's a dip here, right? So to advance from the forming stage to the storming stage, I almost said that incorrectly, each member of the team has to sort of relinquish a little bit of that comfort zone of some of those non-threatening topics, and risk the possibility of some conflict, because that is part of team development. Conflict is actually healthy and normal. So even though we see a dip here, it's natural, it's normal, it's to be expected. So that's helpful, hopefully, for you to know, but also for your teams to recognize as well, there's not something wrong with us, we're not completely dysfunctional, we're just figuring things out, and when we figure things out, it can get a little stormy. So when we think about this storming phase, this is really where this stage starts to begin to occur as the process of organizing tasks and processes, which were important for you to do in forming, start to surface some interpersonal conflicts, right? So leadership, power, structural issues even, can start to dominate in this stage. Team members might be feeling a little disconnected from the group, maybe there's some uncertainty that's still looming and greeted at times with some tenseness from team members, maybe some disagreement is expressed more than it was so earlier. Individuals start to really kind of figure out how to establish belonging with this group in the way that we're now operating and interacting, and as a leader, you might find yourself very busy stepping in quite frequently to help work through some interpersonal conflicts. So again, to be expected, normal as part of this process. So people might, as you can imagine, start to feel a little defensive, they might be a little more confused, and may even lose some interest due to that kind of lack of connectedness that we generally feel with a very solid team. They also may be a little more resistant to tasks, so recognize that's normal as well, because they're really unsure of things, you know, at this time. So the behaviors that you might see show up, there may be some arguments, right? As those tensions start to kind of surface, there may be some disagreements that are rooted in different styles or points of view, different ways that we approach our work, different points of view that we might have on that. And the team is really, it's important to recognize that they're really trying to work through reorganizing, right, through this storming phase. So sometimes there's power struggles, sometimes there's clashes. It's also typical for teams to experience a slight dip in progress, so you can expect that as well, know that it's coming as you move in these, in these new ways, because there's a lot of energy and effort that's having to be placed on the interpersonal relationships, right? And so because of that, there's less energy and effort focused in on our goals, and that tends to be more top of the mind for people. So again, let's chat as we think about leading a hybrid team and moving into the space of storming. I want to hear from you in the chat, what might be some sources of conflict for a hybrid team in particular? What might be some sources of conflict for a hybrid team in particular? Thank you, Natalie, yeah, miscommunication, it's a challenge when we're physically together, it's an even greater challenge when distance is a factor. Perceptions, oh, thank you, Kelly, definitely, I might think, because I don't hear from you, you must not be working as hard as others. Yes, that fairness and equity piece comes into play, accountability, yep. It's very easy to misinterpret things, especially when technology is serving as our in-between. Yeah. Absolutely. So I want to know, as a leader, what do you think you could do to address some of these challenges? So we're moving and working in this new way, conflict is starting to surface around things like a sense of inequity or lack of fairness, maybe misunderstandings or perceptions that are off, what might you want to pay attention to as a leader as far as ways that you could address those types of challenges? Thank you, Kelly, absolutely. Let's pay really close attention to communication during this time, right? Those open lines of communication, keeping that clarity around expectations, thank you, Sandra. Yep, we have to work through this, there's no like easy pass to go past the storming stage. Great, keep those ideas coming in the chat, love to see them. So what does your team need from you during this time? During this storming stage, it's important for individuals to become aware of the different stylistic and personal differences, because those differences could be the source, and likely at times they are, of miscommunication, right? They need to learn how to safely give and receive feedback, so again, kind of opening that communication up, so that they can better understand what each other needs. And to do this effectively, we've got to pay attention to active listening, really effective listening, and maybe even some conflict resolution skills might be necessary as we help pull the team forward through this uncomfortable storming phase. So let's consider some strategies you could use to help move your team forward in this stage, right? Again, back to our three Cs, we'll start with clarify, as some of you mentioned, right? Getting even more specific around expectations, I would say even encouraging more task responsibility, right? So we've stolen this phrase from Dr. Brené Brown, who uses it very often in her work, but clear is kind, unclear is unkind, is what she says. So think about that, right? Being kind is really about getting clear about how much responsibility you want your team members to own, right? And then acknowledge that when conflict arises, it's there. We might want to hide from it, we might want to avoid it, but it usually doesn't go away on its own. Most people are a lot happier when they can work through that, even though it's not always fun. It's actually quite stressful, right, to have this looming conflict in play, especially in the workplace. Then we think about our connection piece, right? Facilitating some of that perspective-taking by encouraging others to share their point of view. So this could sound like, you know, well, maybe we're in a meeting and we're discussing something, and let's say that Martha shares an idea, and I say, oh, that's interesting, Martha, that's one way of looking at it, does anyone else have a different perspective? You know, opening up those channels so that others can contribute and encouraging that. And help model for your team how to celebrate unique differences, because oftentimes, the root of conflict is in our different approaches or different stylistic ways of doing things. And when we can realize that that's actually what's preventing us from communicating effectively or working more effectively together, it can help us to get past it, to move past it. If any of you have taken our Relationship Strategies course, I'm referring to those natural behavioral communication styles that we all have, right? So maybe you recognize there's a really high level of creativity that somebody invested into a project, and you want to call that out. Or maybe somebody took like some real extra steps, extra time to listen in to a customer who was having a concern, and they demonstrated a high level of empathy and compassion for that individual. These are the opportunities where you can help build greater connection by calling some of those things out, sharing them with the individual, sharing them with the team to recognize and celebrate each other. And then when we consider that last C, communication during the storming phase, it's helpful to establish conflict norms. Now, when this is not easy to do, I will give you that, but it does take a little bit of practice, but you can carve out some space where we can have conversations around, all right, we know conflict is going to happen, right, Elizabeth? Like, you can't avoid it, it's going to happen. So when we disagree about something, not if, but when, what do we agree to do? Da-da-da-da-da, what is it? Let's have a conversation around, and have the group determine, how do we want to be respectful and kind when we don't have the same viewpoint or opinion, right? And so once you establish what are our norms when we experience disagreements or conflict, then we can start to reinforce the emergence of feedback between the team members, you know? Thank you for going directly to Tracy and addressing that miscommunication that was going on. It sounds like there's a lot more clarity now around what was expected, and we can move this project forward. I'm totally making that up, but just calling those things out and reinforcing them so that people can see, ah, this is what my leader wants me to do, my leader wants me to address things and work through things, and they're going to support me through that process. If you hear someone say how somebody else, you know, really helped them out, or, you know, was especially patient with them, working through a challenging situation, call out and reinforce the emergence of that kind of feedback with your team. And then we move on to the norming phase. So in order to progress past to this next stage... So in order to progress past to this next stage, group members have to move from this like testing, improving mentality that we were talking about in storming to a real problem-solving mentality. So we have to start to shift our thinking and our behaviors into the space of really working together. The most important trait in helping teams to move to this next stage is really their ability to listen to each other, which we started to address and cultivate in the storming stage. We now focus even more so explicitly on this piece as we help the team to sort of normalize our work in general. So again, when distance is a factor, you have to consider, how are we going to help individuals and groups to communicate and collaborate effectively? So in this stage, team members are creating those new ways of interacting, new ways of doing things together, new ways of being together. And as the group starts to have a little more cohesion and a little more success with that, your leadership actually adjusts and changes. So it moves from this place of like, one person is... For those of you that don't like that direct approach, here's where you get past it. We're moving to a more of a shared leadership style in order for the team to be truly effective. So when we think about the thoughts and feelings that come up during this stage, it's really more acceptance of each other. People start to generate more optimism about the future and what we're all doing together, and maybe even express more passion about the work. The sense of belonging to the team really starts to increase along with individuals' confidence as well as their ability to express themselves authentically, genuinely in the work environment. The behaviors that you might see include things like people following up on established routines. Maybe there's more of a sense of being comfortable with the relationships. Again, that giving and receiving of feedback starts to become just part of how we operate and work. And there's a greater focus of energy and efforts on the tasks and goals that we're striving to work toward, as well as some of that shared problem-solving that's necessary to get us there. And so progress at this stage is much more evident. So if you were worried about, oh, my gosh, we're going to be in a lull for too long, once we can get to this place of having some established structure and routines and some flow of communication, we're going to revisit this piece of, let's focus on our goals and our achievement. And that actually pulls the group together and helps with that cohesion even more. So let's think about this in the context again of a hybrid team. When we move to this phase, we talk about some of that shared leadership. What do you think signs of shared leadership might look like in a hybrid team arrangement? What are some ways that you might see shared leadership showing up? Give you just a moment to respond in the chat. Thank you, Tracy. Specific tasks for a specific group. And maybe we even shift the focus to the group to identify what those things are. Thank you, Mary. Yep, encouraging them to, to do more of their own sharing. Great. Right, more ownership, right? Of the leading of the team. So when we shift the ownership from you as the individual leader to this is actually something that we all own together, we start to see that the role of the leader really changes when this shared leadership space starts to evolve. So you might find yourself doing more coaching, more supporting with resources, more encouraging others to problem-solve on their own or go to other teammates to problem-solve versus it being reliant upon you and helping them to see the benefits when they do, right? So during this time, teams need, you know, to really have some solid clarity around decision-making. The focus shifts to how we collectively are making decisions and what are the processes that we can put in place to do that most effectively. And then problem-solving is a shared experience where we have ideas and suggestions and even resources being the focus at this time. There's also an increased need for responsibility and autonomy. Now, this can be a scary place for you as a leader. Because as you start to relinquish some of the control over managing and leading the group, there are different ways that you are then required to show up and lead. So it's not like your role is gone. It's not like the team doesn't need you at all. But what they need from you is very different, okay? So we think about our leadership strategies here. And in that first C, clarify, you know, this is a place where you need to lean in and think about, what are the contributions that I might want to draw out from team members? So maybe they don't naturally volunteer in this way or that way, but I might encourage that or tap them on the shoulder and say, hey, have you ever thought of doing X, Y, Z? Again, that focus on feedback, but with an emphasis on supporting and coaching. And that could even be, you know, giving people resources or dedicated time. So maybe I say, okay, well, you three are working on this project. And one of the ways I'm going to help you is to clarify, what protected time do you need? And how can we get that on your schedule so that you have what you need to be able to collaborate together, right? So how I'm leading is looking slightly different. And then those connections, still very important, right? And here, we're going to focus in on fostering stronger relationships, right? Encouraging again for people to lean on each other, helping them to see maybe if they don't know that somebody else has a strength in a certain area that they can tap into that, and maybe even encouraging some specific collaborations that might come about. And then when we think about communicating, again, that decision-making comes into play. So we're going to try and think about, how can we engage the group in making decisions more together? Or at times, at least weighing in more their opinion or their perspective on some of that decision-making. Doesn't mean you will never make decisions on your own. It just means that there's a greater need for us to have some cohesion on some, some, not all, decision-making that happens, right? And then when we communicate, you know, this is an opportunity for you to move out some of that structure. That doesn't mean we don't check in with folks regularly. We still do. But thinking about the level of autonomy that we might give to them based on how successful they have been up to this point, right? And the major task function at the norming stage for groups is really that flow of information or that flow of data in between group members. So we want to pay close attention to how well that's happening. Because the danger here is that we can slip very quickly back down into storming or even further back with just some small changes or problems that might surface, right? So creativity is oftentimes higher here, and that's a good thing, but we want to keep it at that level. So thinking about those collaborations and how you can share that leadership across the board with the team. And then we move from norming to performing. And the performing stage is not reached by all groups. So I'm just going to mention some of this briefly here because it's not really a focus for us at this time as far as thinking about best practices for leading a hybrid team. But if group members are able to really evolve to the stage of performing, it's this place where we've met, we have enough capacity, we have enough range and depth of personal relations that we can really expand to true interdependence. This is like the ideal world of collaboration, right? So in this stage, people can work independently. They can work in subgroups. They can even function as a total unit with equal competencies across the board. So during the performing stage, you know, people are performing generally across the board at high levels. Everyone has a really good grasp of our purpose, our mission and our vision. And they regularly observe and hold each other accountable for our group norms. The team is really capable of making decisions and problem-solving collectively. And again, you as a leader are more facilitative in the process of bringing together and creating those opportunities where we might engage in that conversation. And individuals and groups within the team are able to work kind of independently, but also interdependently. So during this stage, people have, you know, a higher level of commitment. They tend to express more empathy and even gratitude to each other. There's a higher level of enthusiasm about the work that we do. And those relational bonds tend to be a little more tight and secure. And in this place, we can develop more personally and even explore some creativity or growth opportunities as we feel really kind of satisfied and confident in our work as a team. The behaviors that you meet might see show up, just real clarity around roles, that independence within the team and members of the team are able to really be productive, like I said, either individually or together collectively. They have this sense, and this is important to note because it really is cultivated in that norming phase where we now are more aware of each other's strengths and weaknesses. And then we can use our knowledge of each other and the things that make us unique and different to really benefit us as a team as we collaborate. And then we also have great insight into our group processes. And usually, feedback is kind of free-flowing between what things are working. And you might even hear from group members like, hey, we should prioritize this because it's really creating this issue over here. And there's sort of that free flow of information. So during this time, teams really need just continued guidance on moving in that collaborative direction. They need to maintain some flexibility. So continuing to pay close attention to those interactions, especially in the flow of communication, and addressing any issues that arise as quickly as you can. And they'll still need you as a leader to be providing them with accurate, detailed information in a timely manner so that they have what they need to be able to facilitate some of these problem-solving and decision-making processes. And of course, the emphasis on giving and receiving feedback is still here. It will always be important, that free flow of communication. And when I, you know, when I'm stuck on something, I can reach out for support, whether it's to another team member or to you as my leader and say, hey, I'm stuck or I need help. And I have the safety within the team to be able to say that. So some strategies for leaders to pay attention to, really just empowering others, helping them to see the potential that exists within them. So I believe in you, I know you can do this, and, and I'm here to support you. My, my boss does a really good job of this in the problem-solving space where he'll say to me, you know, at times, like I'll say, okay, here's what I'm thinking. I could do it this way, but I'm not really sure. And he'll say, okay, well, you know, if you do it this way, here's some things to consider. You could also do it this way, and here's some things you might want to consider. Or you could do it this way, and here's some things you could consider. But you make the decision, you know? So it really empowers me to think about critically kind of what factors are at play and the ways that I can best take action. You'll also want to pay attention to just continuing to foster those collaborative efforts and try to help people to not get stuck in the grooves of working in the same ways. So there may be opportunities where you say, you know, I know that typically, these people might work together on a project like this, but we're going to mix it up a little bit, and we're going to have these folks work together. Keeping that communication front and center at all times and really helping to promote individual ownership of the team's results. So we see that, yes, I might have a role that is very specific and niche over here, but that role actually contributes to the greater good of the team and how we're able to meet our team goals and results. And then recognizing and celebrating those successes along the way, just as important at this kind of ending phase of performing. But we never really take our eye off of these different phases of development. Because although it's important to note where you're at and what your team needs from you at that time, it's also continually an evolving process, right? So like I mentioned, there may be some things that come up that throw you back to another phase of development, even though you've worked so hard to get to, say, the norming phase, right? Can anyone think of, in the chat, I would love to hear from you, what are some things that might happen if you were leading a hybrid team that might throw you back to a lower phase in the process? Someone quits. Exactly. Oh, there, we lost a team member. And then when we lose a team member, we usually get a new one, right? And so we have to sort of restart some of those things. Maybe not completely, maybe not for a long time, but acclimating in. Oh, good one, Tracy. Policy changes that might have a big impact on our work. Yes, that could definitely throw the team. Oh, that's a good one. Lack of productivity. So if we are really kind of struggling to meet our goals, that might even create some conflict within our team. Definitely, leadership changes and restructuring. Absolutely. So for you as a leader, right now, I'm thinking about leading a hybrid team. Well, first, I want to hear from you. Does anyone have a current situation where they have a hybrid team in place that they are managing? Or are you thinking about this in this space? Okay, a couple of you do. Good, all right. So can you identify, based on these stages of development, where your team might be sort of at right now? If you have a hybrid team that you're managing right now, where do you think they're at? I want you to think about that. And hopefully, this was helpful to you to think about as far as examining some of these best practices that you might want to consider. So today, we talked about those different stages of group development, what you can expect, and how to facilitate growth to help your team to transition even forward. We talked about those three Cs for each one of those different phases. So clarifying, connecting, and communicating along the way. Yeah, thank you. Some of you are like forming, definitely slowly going into norming. Yep, good. So these are your, our strategies to think about, right? It is a fluid process. You're going to have some ebbs and flows. You might even get to a higher peak time and then realize, oh, we've got some stuff that's taken us back down a notch. And then think about what those considerations are that you might want to pay close attention to as the leader of the team. Do we have any questions? Feel free to put them into the chat if you're like, well, Becky, that sounds great, but I was really wondering. Any questions? Feel free to put those in the chat. I'm going to advance to the next slide to talk to you about next week's webinar. But put those questions in there, and I will address them if they come in. We do have one more webinar lined up in our Managing Remote Work series. Next Wednesday, we'll look at the ways to build a strong remote work culture. So this is really a series meant to kind of build as we go. So first, we talked about exploring options. What are some considerations if you're thinking about moving in this space of a remote or hybrid work model? Today, we talked about some of those phases of development that we can expect and some things to pay attention to at each little juncture along the way. And in this last one, we'll really lean more closely into some of those practices for you as a manager and leader that can be helpful to promote a stronger hybrid or remote work culture. So we'll talk a little bit more specifically about some of those actions. Thank you. So the past webinar information, including a recording and the Leader Guide, is posted on our Keep Growing site, which I will send in a link to you in our follow-up email as well. And if you're not able to attend that last one, no worries. We'll be recording it, and you can watch it afterwards. Thank you for your time today. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. I'll address the one that's in the chat in just a moment. But I want to be respectful of your time. You can feel free to reach out to me. My email's on the screen there if you have any direct questions. And then I'm going to also put a survey link in the chat. I'll send it out via email as well. And if you would not mind, I appreciate you providing me with some feedback on the webinar itself and ways that we could address any other questions moving forward for the last one. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you have a great day.